We got five.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Here.
Brenda Simmons. Craig Scott.
Here.
Approval of the agenda, any additions or corrections? Missions?
No.
Public comment, any public comment in the room on agenda items only? Any public comment on the phone? Appointments, I don't believe there are any, correct? Uh, we got discussion item fiscal year 2025 budget. Do you have the?
I don't have any questions, so.
Where are we at with everything?
I'm ready to pass it.
Questions, comments? Mr. Wiltie, you missed the last meeting, did you have any comments, questions?
No, I think we're at a point where ready to pan, pass this budget and got a lot of hard work to do, gotta be consistent with their actions. We've got to get this figured out, we've got to head in direction to get this financial position where it needs to be. It's gonna take a lot more hard work from here.
Mr. Mayhew, do you have anything?
The only thing I was last time, I guess I more spoke, it's not to do with promotions, it's levels. I mean, we have levels union that we can't control, but the other levels we can, correct?
Right.
And they're gonna be like throws, not until everybody can get a raise.
Well, that'll ultimately be the board's decision, but for right now, it's all stabilized at where it was for the current year for twenty four.
That's gonna be in the budget.
That's the way the budget's prepared, right?
Two, I got a question, I just had asked about the commissary fund here. Revenues I'm seeing at twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four amended budget, three hundred thousand dollars. Have we, with, with the updated budget? When I'm looking at this, how much of that money was transferred into the general fund? I'm on page seventy-two.
Budgeted two hundred twenty-five thousand to be transferred out to the general funds. So, two twenty-five was multiple of the ends there right now, uh, and that's, that's what we budgeted to do for this year, it definitely will happen. Very likely in the next week or three, all those transfers will take place.
Can you explain, when I'm, when I'm looking, can you explain that to me again, I guess I'm not seeing that here?
Yeah, this one's already been transferred now, so down on the expenditures, the very last one, it says transfers out. You see, we have budgeted the two hundred twenty-five thousand to transfer out. And that has already occurred for this fiscal year, so there won't be more transfers, there are no more budgeted transfers to come out of there. But that's already been transferred to the general fund.
So that's one taken into consideration as far as the revenues coming in for that was three hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty-five of that's been transferred out to the general fund.
Right.
We're gonna lose those revenues in the general fund.
Right, they're not programmed in for twenty-five.
Is there any other, Tim, do you have any, any, anything come up since last meeting to this meeting, any new information, any um, I guess conversations with department heads, elected officials?
The, I'm just backing up, we did the uh retirement move, so all the retirement is shown on that one line now, there was one that was missed. On the last edition that you got, that's been corrected. New insurance rates have been programmed in, you know, you'll see those rates that they'll vote on on Thursday. Uh, as far as any other conversations with departments, I do have it in the file, uh, we talked about different scenarios for the road patrol mileage fund, so you see those two scenarios are mapped out. In one of the handouts, uh, you do have the district court request along with the central services breakdown that you've seen in Harz Prans, now it's, it's on your iPad too, so you can see that. True to think, I don't think there've been any other changes. Anything, those were the last two outstanding things, where the retirement and the insurance.
The two different scenarios that you gave us a breakdown of, I know I printed that off. Or the sheriff's office, where, 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 what page are you on there?
It's in a different file on the iPad. It's called road patrol budget scenarios.
Okay, so looking at our updated budget that we have, the revenue and expenditure report, where, which scenario do you have in here?
So that's the one that I recommended, that was the two six deputy proposal, uh, there was a conversation at the board, uh, last week of one sergeant, seven deputies in recognition of the fact that there are vacancies and there are some things in flux. The sheriff at the law enforcement committee, uh, suggested, and then I believe he also said at our last meeting, a scenario that included one lieutenant, two sergeants and five deputies. So between the, all of the scenarios, it's eight personnel across the board, it's just a matter of how they're classified. And I know, uh, I'm sure in our conversation this morning, uh, you observed that there wasn't a whole lot of difference between the two well, these two, but between all three scenarios, roughly about a thirty thousand dollar swing, uh, between the one sergeant, seven deputy to the one lieutenant, two sergeants and five deputies, and the reason is the benefits are primarily stable, so the big one being the health insurance is stable, it doesn't matter what rank you have, if you want family coverage, it's a single rate, so that rate is programmed in. The only difference is a sergeant will earn eight percent higher than the top deputy wage. A lieutenant would earn thirteen percent higher than the top deputy wage. So that's where with the thirty thousand dollar swing comes, so it's strictly wages at that point, of course, it will ripple through with the social security and things of that nature, but that's why that's such a small number, it's the same number of people, just a different rank. And so you don't see a huge fluctuation in the expense that way, under the lieutenant, two sergeant scenario, this would result in an eighty-two thousand, eight hundred eighty-three dollar surplus. The one sergeant, seven deputy would result in a one hundred twelve thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollar surplus, so it'd be fund balance at the end of the year. Uh, so those, those are the primary differences, and of course, the uh, one that's in the budget right now under recommended falls right between them, right between the two scenarios.
So the one that's in the budget is not either scenario A or scenario B?
No, it's the recommended scenario, which is the two sergeant, six deputy scenario.
So I guess if we're given two scenarios, but neither one of them are in our budget? I'm not understanding.
That's what you wanted to talk about tonight, if you wanted to.
Right now, what's in the budget?
What's in the budget is two sergeants, six deputies.
What does a law enforcement committee agreed upon, any? Either one, I guess we have three scenarios.
Final scenario B, right now.
Commissioner Wiltie? There's a thirty thousand, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, we had our last law enforcement meeting, and as Tim said, the sheriff recommended one lieutenant and two sergeants. Uh, we know that we had two current candidates that were in you know, one adult, one up in Traverse City to get them on the road, and obviously it's something that I don't understand exactly how that training works, and I understand that you gotta have people in command for certain training, so you know, we put a lot of faith in our sheriff and our undersheriff to know what they need to be able to do that. And we know at the end of the day, the most important thing is to have in my eyes, the most qualified road patrol deputies we can on the roads, day and night to protect our citizens, that's what we need to have. We know we're shorthanded right now. Um, I don't know, Paul, would you like to let us know about the information that just received that you stated to me today, sheriff stated to me today? That one of our candidates is out?
One of our two recruits is having some physical issues that we're dealing with. Trying to figure out options, whereas how that affects M. Coles, what his future might look like, so. Um, but right now, he's got some physical limitations that are affecting his training, so we're going through that process, talking about trying to get all that information put together, so I'll disseminate that as we get further in the next week and obtain that, unfortunately. These are some of the potholes that we run into, one is physical injury or physical limitations of one of our candidates experiencing, experiencing that currently.
So with that being said, you know, we're not sure if where that direction is gonna go. And to be moving forward with possibly one new officer, then we're gonna have sheriff, undersheriff, a lieutenant and two sergeants. Seems pretty heavy on the command side, but again, you know, I talked with Paul, I talked with undersheriff, and I talked with the sheriff, I've done that since I've gotten back and they're adamant that when we're full staff, this is, this is what we need. The two sergeants, one sergeant would be a, well, they both most likely will be working day shifts. But one will oversee, you know, the day shift operations, and of course, the night shift top seniority guys on, on control at that time, but the, that sergeant's gonna oversee them, and that makes sense to me. Again, I've said this many times before, you know, we just need to have the most qualified people we can on the road to protect our citizens, and we know right now that due to a number of circumstances, you know, we're, we're, we're short, we're severely short. And we, we need to get this built back up, and we need to have the right management in place. They're telling us that's what the management needs to be. I mean, do we wait to see how things unfold a little bit, I mean, we can always make adjustments. A little back and forth on, on now.
What's statutory on this? What, what is required?
You're not required to have road patrol at all. Fortunately, we have a mileage that's dedicated just to that, so that's really the limitation.
Under sheriff, do you wanna talk at all?
Oh, the sheriff just replied to the one, one lieutenant, two sergeants. That's the command A, as we only have one current person that would be eligible for promotion to lieutenant. And as Mr. Wiltie was talking about, you'd have a sergeant covering A shift and a sergeant covering B shift for supervisory levels. Part of that too is with the change of the jail, some of my duties are gonna change as we try to learn this whole new process of jail lockup. So we're gonna need that command staff at the roadside to keep those operations going to the best of our ability, while the current administrative assistant that's gonna remain and myself lieutenant Howard, we get through this jail operation. So that's what the sheriff's proposed, and what he wants to do is lieutenant, two sergeants for the operations and the five deputies, that does not include your two SORs or your secondary rooms. Those are additional to these eight bodies.
I'd like to just add one more thing, my question for Paul kinda too. You know, we, we discussed in law enforcement, we knew the upcoming retirement, which sounds like today was the last day.
Twenty-six.
The twenty-sixth is gonna be the last day. So would there be then that possibility of that sergeant or the sergeants together taking on possibly some detective work then as well, because we have a detective that's retiring and we're not replacing the detective?
And that's a good point that was brought up, well, other than discussing, there are detective duties that need to be done, and currently, we the plan is to spread that out over the, these three positions. Uh, we don't have a clear-cut identified detective at this point that stands out and fill that role, so along with administrative duties, those detective duties are gonna be split up between these individuals.
Mr. Rayo?
I, I know they, they want to in the higher rankings, but me, I would rather see more more stability and them having a job other than having higher up and, and losing the lower people like we did last time.
With this scenario, I don't see us losing anybody at the bottom, but we still have two vacancies.
That's what we lost last time was road patrol, is what we lost.
We lost those three positions.
And I, myself, I would rather see the jobs that they have that they're, they're stable, we're not gonna lose them. That's my thought on it, but.
I, I just, last time, uh, last meeting, the sheriff was up here and, and we were talking about the road patrol mileage and twenty-four hour road patrol and um, some roadblocks that, that are currently being hit with that, which is short-staffed, and, and he just reiterated over and over again that he hates bodies on the road. Um, said that a couple different times, so to me, looking at this scenario B, we can adjust this, correct?
Yes.
So to me, I personally, pardon me?
The sergeants and lieutenant will have road duties also. Just given the staffing levels, they will have road responsibility. I just, sorry.
No, you're okay, I just think while these adjustments and things are being made, I, I, I agree, there's gonna be a lot of um changes with, with the jail operations and probably different responsibilities. Um, I, I think once we, we have a better idea of what that will entail, I'm more in favor right now of scenario B as well, it's gonna save us thirty thousand dollars. Um, but then moving forward, if, if you guys are able to come to us and, and show us um, the various responsibilities and, and show us why two sergeants and, and uh are needed, cause I, 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 I have no idea, but I just know he said over and over again at the last meeting that bodies are needed on the road. And this other scenario, I don't, I, I, I see less bodies versus more. Um, I understand management, I understand all of that, but uh that, that, that's where I'm at with that right now. Again, that can change.
So I'd like to add to that too, and again, um, discussing this just recently, again with the sheriff and undersheriff. I don't know exactly, obviously, on a day-to-day basis, what it takes to run a sheriff department, that's their wheelhouse. How we put the faith on them to do that, but we know we do have a lot of different things going on right now, there's gonna be a lot of different scenarios, we've got some major things going on with the closure of the jail to lock up only, how we're gonna be able to manage that. And I think that right now, in this point in time, more than ever, I hope that the communication between the board and the sheriff department is stronger than ever. And as we move forward, to go along with kind of what you guys are saying, we can, we can make adjustments. We, we've got it, we've got to figure out what, what we have. And uh we can make these adjustments, communication's there, the understanding's there, we enough to know the need is there, a little more communication consistently can help us make those adjustments very easily. Um, I think ultimately, probably, I would also agree, right now, knowing that we can communicate, we can all work together, we know the importance of this matter, so protecting our citizens of the county is very important to all of us, and I think we've all made that clear. Um, adjustments can be made. So. I also agree with scenario B.
Anything else on that? Both judges are here, I appreciate you guys being here, um, I guess I haven't had you guys here as far as an impact on the budget and the jail closing. Guys have an opinion or anything either of you would like to state?
Jail closing?
Uh, turning into a lockup, yes, would you like to come up, Judge Bennett? Do you mind? I appreciate you being here.
If you, if you're up here talking, Zoom can hear you better.
Correct, that's why.
Zoom got a little bit of a cold stem, I hope.
Yeah, Zoom can't, Zoom gets picked up up here and knocked back to it.
Well, my opinion's been the same right from the get-go, I think it's a mistake, I think it's a short-sighted mistake. And the reason I got there is, um, this county's not getting smaller, it's only gonna develop. The development seems to be at a pretty uh steady pace, population indicators and show that population's not gonna go down. And uh, there's still money owed on the facility in the mothball it. With all of that being said, it is a step backwards, and once you do that, trying to get it up and running again will be a tall order, so this decision you guys make will have an impact for decades, and I think that's why it's very short-sighted. That's really all I gotta say, the functioning of the courts, I fear, is going to be a disaster. Uh, we will manage, we'll do what we have to do. Um, MIDC, the defense bar, they're gonna have a real problem too. Those are all realities that are there, um, so again, taking it all together, I think it's a short-sighted move. I don't know what else I can say.
I think that was my question, as far as how is this gonna impact how the, how the courts?
Well, it'll impact the courts, uh, we have arraignments all the time, all week long. Particularly in district court, that's where all the felony start and all the misdemeanors uh, obviously start and stay there. Uh, so these, these individuals that are lodged and, and weren't able to post bond at the time of their arrest, they're lodged, and they have to be arraigned at a very short time schedule. So this is gonna have to be done, what, from Gladwin, I don't know where you guys are gonna house these people. Okay, uh, so it's gonna be, what, with Zoom, or you're gonna have vans going all day long?
What have we, what have we?
We've got Zoom, and I forget the name of the
Polycom.
Polycom.
Yeah, Polycom, we haven't used Polycom in five years, but, okay.
Um, we just, we didn't know that, but we asked if they had it.
Yeah, we have it, the system's terrible, it's slow.
Well, they have the slow system, if you
They don't use it much anymore, but um but the problem with Zoom is this, a communication noise in the facility and the attorney's ability to talk to their clients. So what that means for Judge Beebe and I is that our dockets that are full to get through an arraignment that used to take five minutes, it's gonna take twenty minutes. Judge Beebe's day on arraignment day that goes till three o'clock, now it's gonna go all day without a lunch break. I mean, that's what this means. Uh, possibly, realistically. Um, in my court, circuit court, um, the stakes are a little different, not as many persons, because not all the cases are felonies, right? But you got in my court, cases that involve people that are looking at life in prison. Fifteen years in prison, ten years in prison, the stakes are a little higher, the communication and the needs to communicate with these individuals is a little stronger. Um, the ability for MIDC to do that on Zoom with their inmates in Gladwin could be a real problem. It's gonna be a real problem, Judge Beebe's schedule and my schedule is very two counties, we flip back and forth, uh, so we're in Roscommon, we're a year. We're gonna have to coordinate all of this now, uh, very differently, so.
You know we wanted to go to Roscommon. And somebody threw a side, sidearm pitch into it, that didn't have anything to do with the negotiations. And so that's out, so we had to find another place.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, I didn't want, I didn't want it to hurt indigenous like that.
Well, a lot of these problems would have existed even if the inmates were in Roscommon.
Some would, some would.
Minimal, they were less, for sure, but the Gladwin thing is problematic.
Yeah.
But uh, I understand the fiscal issues that this board's facing, again, there's not an easy decision here, but it's the analogy, I own a Harley-Davidson, I don't ride as much as I used to. I don't have a debt on the Harley-Davidson, I haven't sold it because if I sell it, I'm not getting another one.
Right, okay.
So I'm just gonna keep it, you mothball this jail, it's gonna be really hard to get another one. And in twenty years, are the citizens then gonna go, what were they thinking?
What were they thinking, well, I asked what they were thinking fourteen years ago.
Can I make a comment? How, how, one, one quick, um, we, you, in this budget, you have two transports budgeted per day, correct?
Well, that's a mock schedule that I drew up, um, that, that would have had on weekdays a morning shuttle and an afternoon, or earlier morning and later in the afternoon shuttle, so that would hopefully, well, would coincide then with the court schedule to make sure people are here, who need to be here, on weekends, there would be at least one on a program one, back and forth. Uh, ultimately, that's the sheriff's call, and how they run the jail, this is just a mock-up that I came up with that said, here, there's something to think about. Uh, so what they ultimately end up doing, you know, will be their call. But that's, that's how I set it up, and then hopefully that would have addressed at least getting people in and out of court. And hopefully would alleviate some of the other attorneys, the MIDC attorneys, for instance, uh, if they needed to have a, if you needed to see an inmate that happened to be in Gladwin, well, there's a opportunity to get them up here in the morning, meet with their attorney here and send them back in the afternoon with the afternoon. Problem with that is there's no place to meet with the attorney here. There's jury rooms and that's it, in the law library.
What do they typically meet right now?
Uh, well, they typically meet at the jail hall.
Okay, that's my question, I have no idea.
Can't they meet in the jail?
They'd have to drive to Gladwin.
No, if we haul them up here.
Well, you're gonna hold them ahead of time, you're gonna bring them up? So if they have a hearing on
Well, all I'm asking is, no, 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 if, if they need to see their attorney Tuesday, and I, and our transit brought them up here and put them in the jail where the attorney could go see them. Why couldn't that work?
That could work if they're here on time, if the court starts at nine o'clock, and depending on when their case is on the docket.
People start at six.
You'd have to deal with MIDC on that, but
Well, we, we talked with, we talked with Gladwin, and we asked that question, is can you have everybody packed up, where you go at seven o'clock in the morning? They're thirty-six miles away. Shouldn't be any problem getting here by nine o'clock.
Well, if you can get them into the holding cell and you have confidential meeting rooms in the jail set up to do that, yeah, that might be an option, but.
As the client's right, we have to provide that, correct?
Yeah, it's under one of the MIDC requirements.
So how have we been doing it now, Judge, cause you said right now we
They do it two ways, they do it uh, through uh I don't know, undersheriff, the, it's not Zoom, but there's like a a portal that the attorneys can use with the jail.
Yeah, there's
I forget the name of it, like Safeway or whatever it's called.
Right.
So they do that, so they can, they do some of that, they do a mixture of that and in person. So.
But in person, you said here, we don't have it set up.
Not in the courthouse. In the jail they do, but if you're bringing inmates over from Gladwin, they're gonna, I don't know what the plan is, if they're gonna be housed and they're gonna be walked over still, I don't know what those details are, but if you're bringing them straight to the courthouse, there's no place for them to meet other than the two jury rooms, assuming they're not being used in the law library.
Tim, do you have something to add?
Well, just as, you know, again, I'm a novice when it comes to this, but uh, it's the simple plan that you're up, I assume they're all going to the jail before they go over to the court, get I, I don't know, whatever they do to an intake to make sure everybody's legitimate. Uh, and then the ones who are here to visit with their attorneys, but just stay there as the others are brought here for court. When the day is done, the group that's here in court gets loaded back up, they go back across the street, grab the guys who need to go back to Gladwin, and they're all on their way back. So I'm hoping if we've got something set up in the jail already for attorneys to meet, that that would still be available. Just gotta make sure that that inmate is on the van to get up here on, on whatever that date is. And again, I don't know the logistics, I don't know how far in advance those attorneys schedule meetings with their clients.
It's, it's case by case, it's based on their schedule and the particular case and what's maybe needed on a case by case basis, for sure.
And isn't there a correction offer that is gonna be needed, like for each inmate while they're having this conversation with their attorney, at least outside the door, again, I don't know how this works either?
Well, I guess then they'll have to drive, attorneys will just have to drive to Gladwin. If we can't do it here, the attorney will just have to drive.
These are just valid questions.
Well, it's just a valid answer too.
We don't know if Gladwin has that, that capability, neither are that room. We don't know if Gladwin has that, that capability, neither or that room.
Oh, let's stop, let's not approve the budget then this week.
Commissioner Scott, that's not, what we said, these are valid questions.
Typically inside a jail setting, the attorneys are buzzed in. There's corrections officers there. They're not in the room, but they're there. So if something happens, they can be something relatively quickly.
Yeah, I, 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 I wanted you guys a definite opinion on this. This is gonna impact you guys.
I've never been to the Gladwin facility, so I don't really know how it's set up at all. Um, so I'm assuming they have that capability, but I don't know that.
Have we asked them?
I, I've not asked them anything about their.
I mean, they have attorneys they have to deal with there too. So I'm, I'm sure they have a setup of some kind. Attorney room or conference room or something. I mean, they have to work under the same parameters of M I D C that we do.
Right, but now it's doubling.
Yeah, sure is.
I mean, so do they have the facility to?
I have no idea. I couldn't even tell you how many beds they have.
They, they're not maxed out on beds, so they probably designed their jail so they in order to hold enough, hold a maximum on people so that they would be able to do this. Otherwise, they wouldn't be able to hold as many people. And I don't think you're talking about huge numbers too. You're not talking trainloads of people every day.
I know, um.
Go ahead.
I know the under sheriff's been actively working with Gladwin County. Has there been any discussion on that part of movement of everything?
Um, I guess, uh, which part of?
The staging, you got the staging of.
That's still work in progress. I mean, we're kind of communicating with them, you know, putting what we can in place as far as for the initial movements and you know, things are gonna have to go on in court day, you know, to your point. Some days there's only three or four. Kind of ours had eleven in the last two weeks on several court days. So you know, in that scenario, we're talking two vans, personnel for driving them. Still maintaining the lockup. There's a lot of factors that are gonna go into this. It's gonna be a work in progress as we try to develop this new system. And for the court days, as the judge brought up, you know, a lot of times they try to have the attorneys talk to their clients so that their court days go smoother. So they've already had that conversation. So if we're doing it last minute before they get on the court, it's just another way their court days are gonna get longer because the attorneys aren't gonna see them until eight o'clock, eight thirty, and they start at nine. These are all growing pains that we're gonna have to go through in this scenario.
Yeah. So with that being said, and again, I don't know a lot about the whole attorney in the court field. Um, but just like we're making adjustments, I would imagine they're gonna have to make some adjustments. Right?
Yeah. Do your protocols require with female inmates, does it be segregated all in transport? Yeah, so we've got that issue.
And add that to the mix.
And there's another rare scenario. It doesn't happen very often, but it is a realistic one and occasionally rears its head and that's a juvenile that's held in the jail. And they have to be segregated too. They can't be earshot or eye shot of an adult. So under those, although the juvenile situation's rare, they'd have to be in a van by themselves. And.
Or a patrol car.
Or a patrol car, however you're setting it up.
Right. Mainly we have patrol cars. We have, we got fourteen, fifteen patrol cars over there. We got, we got uh, uh, an S U V at the, at the jail for, for take one or two persons someplace. We got two vans. We got so many automobiles, it's nuts. I got, we own a whole transit department. If I need a bus, I think the sheriff's department can order a bus. I think he has the authority to. Wouldn't he have the authority to order a transit bus if he needed? No, I'm not saying a transit driver. I'll come in and drive the damn thing. Let's, you can't throw out the whole damn budget because you're worried about.
Questions. This is a meeting for this.
I am too. I'm asking questions too.
Anything else, Judge Bennett?
Nothing else that I can think of.
Judge Beebe?
I obviously voice the same concern that Judge Bennett does as far as the meetings with the uh, attorneys. Um, you know, we.
Can you come up so everybody can hear you?
All right.
Thank you, Emma. You know, my concerns, as I've indicated in the first original meetings that we had, um, Judge Bennett and I both um, and conversations with commissioners, who's commissioners who've asked me is the same type of concerns Judge Bennett has. And, and especially the daily running of the court, it's, it's not saying that it can't be done. And as Judge Bennett said, we'll adjust and we'll do what we can to, you know, to do it the, the best way that we can, cause we have to service these people and we're going to do that. I don't know how it's gonna work because I've not had anybody come to me and look from uh, law enforcement or anybody to say, hey, judge, how would we want, you know, maybe change your docket? Maybe I'll have to change my docket to make it more feasible to give the attorneys a chance to speak with them. Because attorneys are, you know, it's not just the lodge people that they have to be ready for. It's the un-lodge people and the ones that don't ever talk to them. So they come to court and it's the first time they're seeing them or whatever and they haven't been able to reach them. So they're trying to talk with them so that they're ready and they're trying to talk with them. Well, I have, you know, fifteen people on my nine o'clock, ten people on my ten o'clock. You know, cause we go by attorneys and their times. So it can set up, it can set an issue for the entire day if my nine o'clock ones get delayed. And then we're not ready to start a ten o'clock ones because that attorney hasn't met yet with their ones at our lodge or however it is. So it's, it's gonna be an adjustment. And as Judge Bennett said, it, but it's, it's gonna be hard. Um, and those are the concerns I have is those responsibilities to meet with the clients um, ahead of time, especially the arraignments, cause we do all the arraignments. Um, and making sure that we have the courtroom. Sometimes it's just a matter of they haven't had a chance to talk to them. And because they just got appointed or M I D C is just, we found out who's the M I D C attorney that day. And so they were trying to get the Zoom hooked up. And if I'm in the middle of court, I'm gonna have to empty out the entire courtroom, including myself, so the attorney can talk to the one that's on Zoom. And then nothing else gets done in the courtroom until they're done, cause they have to have confidentiality. So we all have to get out. And then it's like, okay, call everybody back in. And you call everybody back in, but that takes my whole day. Do you understand what I'm saying when I say that? So those are the concerns that we have, obviously. We don't know how it's gonna work out, cause we're not there yet. And then once we know how that will work out, we'll have to make adjustments and maybe I'll have to change my schedule. But you also have two judges, as Judge Bennett said, that are not here every day. You know, I have full docket here on Monday, a full, or Ross, Ross Common, a full docket here on Tuesday, a full docket on Wednesday in Ross Common, a full docket here on Thursday. And then Friday is trial days, if I have a trial. So, and you know, it's, it's gonna be an adjustment. But same concerns, just hoping that we can work through them all. Um, and be able to come back to the board to say what is or isn't working, I guess is something I would want. And I'm sure Judge Bennett would want to be able to say, hey, these are the issues we're having. And we're not meeting the M I D C standards. We're not meeting what our standards are and making sure we're on the same page with that.
Questions for Judge Beebe? Commissioner Scott?
Cool.
All right, Commissioner Mayhew, thank you.
All right, yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Any other comments, concerns? Tim, do you have anything to add to the, any of that discussion?
No, I, I think though the judges are saying the reality is, this is gonna be a learning process for all of us. And I think we're gonna find ways that, that we'll be able to overcome some things and some things are gonna be more challenging. But it's just gonna take uh, everybody pulling in the same direction to get everything resolved. And I think, you know, give us three, six months, I think we'll be moving, you know, in a, in a more routine manner, but it's adjustment for everybody. So we have to be mindful of that and be ready to address those when they come up.
As far as owing money on that building, um, we do owe a lot of money yet on that building. Plan is for that building right now for the sheriff's department to move over there. Is that, is that feasible? Do we know if that is? Cause that's a lot of. Comments and questions about that right now? That's the plan of that coming.
Again, I don't know how much, um, you know, thought, how much time there has been to put into logistics of making that move happen. But that's frankly, for me, one of the least of my concerns. And you know, the space is over there. So we'll definitely be able to fit everybody. Uh, will there be adjustments there? Absolutely. But um, yeah, I mean, that's, I think very wise to use that building as much as we can.
Any other questions on this budget?
Ever since I've been here, the payment on that jail has been in appropriations and not linked with the budget of the jail. And we, in calculations, year after year after year, they never use the payment in it. Of course, the sheriff's department didn't wanna use the payment in it because that would just make the cost even higher. And now all of a sudden, we're concerned about it. Now, there's, there's, there's opportunities to repurpose this jail. And the judges have said a couple of different things, but I'm not gonna bring them up right now because the soundbite, everybody's grabbing soundbites and they're running all over the place. Cause I don't think I'm looking at the same Facebook page that you are, because I don't hear the same things that you say you're hearing.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, it's all these different comments. I went to the Mills Township meeting for Charlie because he asked me to. One of the, one that, of the uh, township officials looked at me and says, are, are you, you're planning on making the lockup? And I says, yes, ma'am. The, the inmates are gonna sleep over at the neighbor's house. She says, well, that's so good. And then she said, are you gonna move the sheriff's department into the jail building? I says, yes, ma'am, we are. Well, that sounds good. That sounds really good. And nobody else in the room had a question. Then I drove up to Foster Township. Nobody had a question about it up there. So I don't know where you're hearing all your comments at, but I'm not hearing them all. Uh, one guy called me up, says, you're really gonna ship the inmates out? I says, do you really care where they sleep? Do you really care where they sleep? As long as they're not at my house, he said. Well, yeah. I mean, why do I care where they sleep? My main focus as a commissioner is the bottom line. And I, I, and we have a spending problem in this county. We have to lower that spending. It has to be. The judge even said he understands fiscal parts of it. I'm done.
Commissioner, what do you?
Well, again, and I've been saying this basically since the second meeting I became commissioner here in my first term. I mean, for years and years and years and years, this county ran at a level that we simply couldn't afford. Spend, spend, spend. Don't have the money to spend it. We'll take money that's not sustainable to balance a budget and we'll keep moving forward. We have nowhere else to go. Nowhere else. I've been a huge supporter of law enforcement my entire life. Support judicial system. I support what's right and what's wrong. But we have nowhere else to go. We are completely one hundred percent broke. Eighty-three counties in the state of Michigan were eighty-third in fund balance. Zero, negative cash. This is not what I wanna do. I never imagined being a county commissioner to have to do this, to lay off hardworking people in this county that live in our county. This is the last thing I wanna do. But as a commissioner, I have one thing to do and I've gotta get the financial position of this county in an area where we're gonna have some leverage. We have no leverage. We have no nothing. We have no money. And we're continuing to pick on all of these little, little things. Yes, this is gonna be a challenge. We're gonna have items that we're gonna have to figure out, we're not to work on. But we have to communicate. We have to keep the throttle down and we have to say, okay, this is an issue with the courts and, and how we're gonna, the process, well, what can we do to make it better? And we need everybody to work together because we have nowhere else to go. There's no more options. There's no more money that we can use that's not sustainable to save us.
Why, why are we raising our voices? I, I, I can hear you perfectly fine. I could hear Commissioner Scott perfectly fine.
I, I.
This means a lot.
Cause it's very passionate to me, okay? I've raised my voice because I wanna raise my voice. I'm not yelling at anybody. I'm very passionate about this.
I, I think it's very passionate to all of us or we wouldn't be sitting here.
Okay.
And I agree that these are very difficult decisions for all of us. But I don't feel like anybody raising their voices is, is appropriate at all. There's no reason to yell at us. There's no reason to talk at.
I'm not yelling at anyone.
You can talk to all of us.
I'm not yelling at anyone. I want everyone to know. So they know exactly, yes, this is my position and I am passionate about it. But the county is in that bad of a level. We have nowhere else to go. Commissioner David.
I, I, I understand, but the, the, the louder voice doesn't, doesn't get the point across any clearer.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry if that offends you.
I, I just don't understand the reasoning for it.
Well.
We're, we're in a public.
I'm passionate about it. I'm passionate about it.
Perfect.
Continue to have all these little things, all these little.
This is amazing for questions.
Okay, well, I wanna make another comment.
Go ahead.
All these other people that are talking here and they're talking there and as Commissioner Scott said, they're getting involved. They shouldn't be, they shouldn't be involved. They shouldn't be in that lane and it's screwing up everything. And that's absolutely one hundred percent not acceptable. We have gotta figure out what our stuffs, how to get this fit, how to get this county in a position where we can move forward.
I'm not sure. We're all sitting here. We all have different opinions. I'm not really sure what the word screwing up means. Um, but this meeting is for discussion. We're all entitled to our opinion. We're all entitled to do our research. We're all entitled to everything. Um, so I, I don't know where this is coming from, but I thought that this was what this meeting was for, which was open discussion.
That's what we're doing.
In a professional manner. I also, it's my turn now.
Well, I'd rather you talk all the meaning.
Okay. Again, uh, this is not something, a place that I, I, I wanted to, to be. I, I'm not sure if this is the right decision to make or not. Do I believe it is? Absolutely not. I'm gonna make that very public. I do not. Do I think we have another option at this point in time? I don't see one. I wish there was. Do I think this is gonna impact a lot of things? Absolutely. Do I think that this budget is right on and these numbers are on? No, I don't think we have a way to do that, cause we don't know what changes are gonna have to be made or, or how this is gonna work. I agree with the statement, once this is closed, it's gonna be very difficult to reopen. We have this here. Um, I, I wish three months ago, like I said, that the sheriff who was sitting in front of, talking to me two meetings ago, would have been sitting here two months ago. Um, coming up with, with different ideas, bouncing stuff off of us. Um, a millage was brought to the, to the table for a possible question. Ticket revenues have been brought up a couple of different times. Um, very minute, simple things that I think could have all added up. Washing our own cars, uh, food, just a lot of things, recruiting inmates. Um, I, I, I don't wanna be here. I don't think this is the right decision to make. Um, I just don't see another decision that we're able to make at this point in time. Um, I wish there was more participation that would have happened over the last six months. Um, budget meetings, law enforcement committee meetings, um, uh, I, I, I definitely wish we were not here. Um, Mr. Mayhew?
Well, I don't get my points across too straight or I'm not too fancy a speaker, but I'd like to see the job stable, so people are not quitting because of what they hear. I want them to feel safe at their job, not, I gotta get out of here quick because we ain't gonna have it tomorrow. And that's what I mean when I say that it needs to be more stable.
What needs to be more stable?
Pardon?
Jails or, or jobs? What, what specifically becomes enough?
Well, like the, we have them at the lower floor. Jails that quit because they didn't know where we were going. We had people at the jail quit because they didn't know where we were going. And the under sheriff will tell you, we didn't quit on the jail. Your people quit on us. And, and it was bad. But as far as, as me and her sitting right here, we had never quit on the jail. I was in the parking lot when they said, we're not gonna bother them guys for a, a month bringing their, their people down here. It, it's, it's done. So and I understand, you can only get hit in the head with a mallet two or three times and you get a little shy. But I would just like to see more stability so that you guys are not saying, oh yeah, that's it, we're done. And that's what I mean as far as stability.
You have any comments?
So, I mean, we're gonna ask the people to take no raises. Now, we want, some of them, they wanna give raises. It's have to be stable. That is my belief.
Anything on the sheriff?
Right now.
Judges, anything else?
Hmm?
Judges, anything else?
I don't.
Commissioners, anything else?
Well, no, they're part of the budget. We don't wanna talk about.
I don't have any other questions. Do you have any other questions?
That was it? Just the jail?
I don't have any further questions. Do you have any further questions?
Well, I think the judges came for.
Well, maybe there was questions. That's why we're here. We're not here to.
Okay. I saw it. Because it seemed like district court was a big issue last week. At the last meeting. It's not anymore? We're okay?
Well, I had some.
We're passing the budget?
I, I, we have to vote on the budget on Thursday, correct?
Yes.
Um, I had some questions that was given to us at night, some, some explanation was given, I looked, looked it over, I had some questions, Commissioner Simmons had some questions on it. Um, I got some further clarification, so again, I have no questions at this time. Commissioner Wiltzy?
No, I, I do wanna make a point to you guys, realize when I do get a little loud voice or excited. Because I care, not directed towards anyone, I'm not trying to yell at anyone. I just care a lot about this county. And this is obviously a spot, as we all agree, we don't wanna look in at all, we don't. Again, I would never imagine this is where I thought we'd aim to be. I apologize if everybody thinks that I'm yelling at anyone, not trying to bewittle anyone. I literally wake up every day and I try to do what's best for the county, the people that voted for me. And I wanna see this county succeed, in order for us to succeed. We have got to get in a position where we can create a fund balance, we can create some leverage. We can show our employees that we can do that, we can give raises the way that they should be given. And we can move forward with growth in this county. Without making these very, very hard decisions, we're never gonna be able to do that. That's all I have.
My main concern again is, is this, this isn't gonna make, going in this direction, um isn't gonna save us what we think it's gonna save us, but I guess time will tell. Is there any public comment? Public comment on the phone?
Night, everyone, thank you.